Call to order, the City of Lakeport Planning Commission for Wednesday, December 9th, 2015. Lyndy, would you call the board?
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Copper.
Here.
Commissioner Wick.
Here.
Chair Gainer.
Here.
Moving on to the acceptance of the agenda, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as opposed?
Honorable Chair, I agree with the agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Copper, do I have a second?
Call second.
I have a second by Commissioner Taylor, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Passes. Communications, Kevin?
No requests.
All right. Onto the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Honorable Chair, I motion that we accept the consent of the agenda minutes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second?
Honorable Chair, I'll second that motion.
I have a second by Commissioner Russell, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Probably should have called the board. All right, moving on to the regular calendar. The first one is the consideration of minor revisions to the zoning ordinance, with that, Kevin?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, honorable commissioners. Given, I believe everybody here in the audience is in regards to the AutoZone project, I'll kind of keep my report a little lighter than last time considering there's not really anyone in the audience that I was going to plan on delivering some same information we discussed last time, so I'll keep it a little shorter because you guys have already had to hear me talking up on this one, but really this is, as it states, a minor revision to kind of take care of some of the low-hanging fruit fixes and the zoning ordinance to kind of increase transparency as it relates to administratively approved land use development permits by adding some provisions that we would notify immediate property owners 10 days in advance of any decision rather than the current system where they do not get notified and they're dependent upon the standard five-day appeal, but if you are unaware that the decision has been made, it's difficult to file an appeal within that five days. The second item that these revisions addresses in regards to permitting processing applications, or processing applications, and the main item here that we're requesting your guys' recommendation on for revision is to kind of combine our current 30-day review internally where we determine whether or not a project application is complete with the review period where we would solicit it out to other agencies for their opinion. Combining those two together is very consistent with the Permit Streamlining Act and then also more consistent with what we found other local jurisdictions we needed. Before I turn it over to you, I do have a couple items in regards to some questions that came up last time that I think I found answers to. First, I want to thank Commissioner Wick for scaring the heck out of me over the weekend with his question on, since we didn't provide you guys with the actual minutes for the November 18th hearing and we provide you the minute order as attachment to this agenda item whether or not we can take action. I have discussed that matter with our city attorney and he says the really important part of that whole thing is the action physically taken. Those minutes will need to be adopted prior to any action taken by the city council and we'll have that ready and available to you guys at the next hearing, so we are free to go ahead and move forward and you guys are able to make a recommendation to the city council and move that forward tonight. The second item also, Mr. Wick, Commissioner Wick asked a question at the previous hearing and I said I needed to check with the city attorney in regards to whether or not we could require all applications to go through a pre-application review and I was concerned that there may be some statutory obligations if anyone can come in at any time and submit their application and not have to go through that process. There is not, so if that's something the commission wants to consider, that is something you guys can do. My suggestion as your community development director would be to keep it as it is where it's strongly urged because we have all variations of different types of projects. Some of these projects, they can be discussed and right at the counter within a two or three-minute conversation with the planner, they're so small that they wouldn't warrant that, where we'd actually, I think, be doing a disservice by requiring them to come back and do a formal pre-application meeting. But, on the other hand, for some of these larger projects, we would be urging strongly a staff to go ahead and do a formal pre-application because I think that in the end, it saves an enormous amount of time. The second item for you guys' consideration, and in the previous staff report I provided, I kind of provided some analysis in regards to zoning permits and looking back at our minute order, we didn't really discuss it a little bit in too much detail, I wanted to kind of have you guys look at it again. I did have some potential issues with whether or not it was necessary to add the automatic giving, what we're recommending is that as part of this 10-day review period for any administrative approval, that a neighboring property owner or any member of the public could request that automatically come in and be reviewed by the planning commission. That's not something that's in this code right now and I kind of stole from the zoning permit provisions where we are required to notify property owners or something, but I'm just wondering, if we look at the level of some of these permits that we're approving with zoning permits, these are guest quarters, temporary construction offices, I think, special outdoor vents, they run the gauntlet of, you know, home occupations, are, do you think that it's warranted to have that automatic appeal ability or are these such minor things? Because the way zoning permits work, if you don't meet the conditions, you don't get approved, so it's sort of discretionary, but not really. It runs a line, and so that's why I included it in this revision, but I did want to be very forward in that, that I think that's something you guys should consider on whether or not you think that it's appropriate to add that sort of automatic appeal there. So, just a conversation, I think it's willing, it's necessary. That's all I got.
Commissioners?
It sounds like that particular issue is self-manipulatory.
Yeah, the way it stands right now, we, the way the ordinance is written for a zoning permit, we notify adjacent property owners of the pending approval, just as a notification. They are not provided with an opportunity to have an automatic appeal if they have questions, they would have to come in and file a formal appeal, and that still would be allowed, but it's kind of up to you guys, I don't know, I don't anticipate that we're going to get a lot of applications for home occupation that are just going to be appealed because the neighbors don't like it, but that's a possibility, and so the question becomes, you know, are we making things, in an attempt to try and streamline stuff, are we accidentally doing the opposite? And I just think that's worth your guys' consideration. I've gone back and forth myself.
Would the notice have a written line in there saying that you can appeal?
What these notices would basically provide is say that it would provide a date of when our approval would be given, so say if we sent out a letter today, 10 days this project will be approved unless we receive a request from them, so they would need to make a written request of us.
You can tell them they can't do it.
Yes, yes.
My only comment on this whole thing is, notification shall be given by mail delivery and then I would like to see what recipient's signature will receive, because these things are, you can send it by mail and somebody's not living there full-time, you know, and so they don't get the notice and everything happens and then they come back at the weekend, you know, two weeks away and all of a sudden things are different and they wouldn't really know what happened.
My only qualms with that is in several instances I've noticed that I won't get the signature card back sometimes for more than a month, and that may not be fair to the applicant waiting for that return period, but I understand exactly what you're saying. We run into that problem all the time when we send out notices to property owners and a lot of times we'll get calls from perhaps renters of the property who, you know, the day before a hearing or the day after a hearing sometimes with, you know, I didn't know that this was even being approved.
I just wonder what a good, I mean, for staff, I think it'd be good to say, okay, we noticed and you've already signed, or they're saying, instead of just posting on the door or just sticking it in the mail and calling it good after three days.
We don't require that of other standard legal notices. There'd be some budgetary considerations too, I mean, those things, you know, they're probably know better than I, because they're...
They're about, they're fifty plus to seven dollars these to do certified.
And the idea here is to, you know, is to create transparency, there's no guarantee that everybody's going to be noticed, I mean, because like, you know, a lot of people, like I get mail, I have a property down Santa Rosa, I get, I never look, you know, it doesn't matter to me as far as I'm concerned, but it's just something that, you know, some people miss or don't read or when they hear it, you know, they finally pull it through their letters, oh, what's this, like, see it like two months ago or something, yeah. I mean, we're putting it out there, you know, it's up to them to take the next step.
There's only two notices that are going to be required, one for each side of a property, so that's not a really...
Well, it could, yeah, you're right, I mean, it could be more depending some of these, I think some of our other...
Build it into the fee for the applicant's name.
It's something to consider.
This is my class.
I agree, I believe that it's an unfair burden upon the applicant. You're doing your due diligence, we've had meeting after meeting after meeting where things are advertised, 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 and nobody's in the audience, so I can't see where this issue would be any different than what we've already been doing. We're trying...
Advertising.
I know, I know that, I know there's no advertising, but it's, he's talking about simple things that he justifiably could take care of himself in the office, and he's trying to streamline the whole building process, the procedure of getting something through the city, and if we have to wait for a recipient, a letter, respond that may or may not even be in this country, it throws everything off, it throws the, you know, we can't plan it in a commission meeting, et cetera, et cetera, so I don't think it's fair to the applicant.
Especially, you know, like in my county, a lot of people, property owners, the majority of them, a lot of them don't even live in the county, and for them, if they had to respond before we could make some decision, it could really tie things up, I think, a little bit, and I think the way it's been working, I think it works pretty darn good. I mean, and it's up, you know, the neighbors and the people on a project, it's up for them to do a little homework themselves too, to see what's going on in their neighborhood and if they want to have a, they may come to the meeting and talk to us about it.
Mia, what sort of, other than mail, when applicants are coming in or when you're making contact with the adjacent property owners, what sort of information electronically do you have on these folks that you can send out to them if they're registered or not registered? Do you have a database for that or do you have something in your form that gives you the ability to notate that so that you can make that contact as well?
Well, in the case of an applicant, they provide us a lot of information, you know, contact in regards to the phone itself, all these emails, our application requests a lot of information, but as far as noticing property owners, we use a database that's updated six, every three months from the county office in its regards to where you receive your property taxes for that application. So that's our documentation and record. One of the other things we could do that we've seen done in other jurisdictions is then also just make sure that we mail the site addresses as well to make sure that, you know, if a tenant is there, they would receive a notice as well. But I would worry a little bit just that, you know, we're, this is, we're trying to achieve two objectives that sometimes are at odds with each other, transparency and permit streamlining, but we kind of want to walk that line a little bit, and I'm a little worrisome that requiring, you know, certified would kind of actually push us a little bit the other way on a streamlined aspect, but it's an important point, I mean, that's, the purpose is to notify.
Right now, the standard is that it gets applied and then if it's deemed necessary, it comes before the planning commission.
Correct.
Which is a 30-day span of all kinds of due diligence, and if you're streamlining it to 10 days, then that may on small projects have a lot of validity, but on a larger project, so I guess, I guess where I'm coming down on this is that, you know, good common sense is important, but having it spelled out for everybody to understand what the line is between small project and large project, which we've discussed several times here, I think that needs to be defined.
This doesn't change anything, you know, if it's a, if it requires a notice of public hearing before you guys, it doesn't change any aspects of that, we would still notify on via legal notice in the paper and then also the three of the other papers. This is only applying to those for administrative approval. And then if it does, if we do receive a request for hearing, we'll notify the 300th in regards to it coming before you guys for a decision.
I have questions on the document, actually.
Correct.
If I may.
The attachment?
The actual draft, resolution. So, if the first, if the front page is number one, this would be the fourth page, it would be the backside of page three. In last month's discussion, we talked about the reference number.
Yeah.
And it says Section 1718A, so I'm just verifying that that's accurate or is it to be 18.090?
I went back and looked at it and because we, if you look at that reference, if it is found that a project does not comply with the findings set forth in Section 17.080 and you go back to zero, that is the findings section instead.
Okay.
So, I didn't, I didn't change that, what I did remove was the above, because it isn't physically above.
Thank you, so I appreciate that. This would, the next question would be on page...
Yeah, sorry the page number didn't...
Yeah, that's okay. Let's see if I can make this page here. Okay, so this would be Section 7, which is about four, two, three, four, five, six page. Item 1729030. When looking at the original description, there was, there was actually a description of that particular part of the code that was stricken and it goes right into Item A without a description. Is there supposed to be a description for this particular code or is this just a standalone?
You're looking at A?
I'm looking at 1729030, land use application, the definition is stricken and then it goes right into Item A, there's no definition.
Oh, so you want to create that...
Well, I'm asking, is it necessary to have that definition, whereas all the rest of them are applied to define what this is?
Yeah, that probably shouldn't be stricken, so that would, the following procedure shall be followed in processing of land use application and development permits which require planning commissioners, yeah, that, we should probably remove the strikeout in for that one clause right under 17.091.
Yeah, give some definition, that would be helpful. And then I have a question on the second to last page, very last item, 1729040. And I guess, I'm assuming, well, I looked at it, but this particular item was changed to 1729050, is that correct? The original language?
04 used the time limits, now it's 050.
So it's changed to 050, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? All right.
Section 4. Number 8. Managed creative approval?
Yes.
Under 2 and 3.
There should be an extra line.
I wasn't aware that you guys administrative approved single-family dwelling meetings.
Good.
Well, that's not single-family dwelling, number 2, multi-family, okay, everything higher than single-family dwelling.
Yes, yeah, and there should be a space there, so it's, single-family dwellings and additions there too is a separate standalone. So someone came in with a, for a permit to construct a new single-family residence, we would approve that administratively, checking in for setbacks, compliance with codes on parking, stuff like that.
Consistent with what we've decided to start with at that?
Yeah. My question still sort of remains on how we want to handle zoning permits, do we want to include a notification where they're given that opportunity to request a hearing before you guys, or do you want to keep it the same as it's written where we provide notification, the action?
Seems to me that's working the way it is.
I like the idea of small projects getting fast-tracked.
Yes.
I think it's sort of an unfair process to go for, you know, waiting 30, 45 days or whatever it may be, you know, potentially, however, you know, when you're talking about a major renovation or you're looking at something that's new construction, I mean, that's certainly something that should be under the purview of the planning commission.
That's not stat.
And so then again, as mentioned before, where's that line? We need to come up with some sort of standard or, I mean, common sense is common sense and we, if you trust the community development staff implicitly, they do a very good job, but at the same time, if a neighbor or an opponent is upset with the fast-tracking and they'll feel like there's no diligence involved, then we're right back into the stupid stuff, so perhaps, you know, a standard needs to be created or a reasonable clause that indicates standards to be approved?
Well, and that's why I bring up the zoning permit item, because the zoning permit section of the ordinance does, you know, okay, for instance, a guest quarters, and then in listing the requirements of the guest quarters, there are nine requirements that they must meet prior to us approving it, that's different than these other administrative permits, these all have performance standards that must be met, if they can't meet number three, I can't approve it, I mean, it's as simple as that. So it's a little different than, say, a minor architectural design review where there is discretion, these are, they hop the line of whether or not they're really even discretionary because they have to meet A, B, C, D, and E, and each of them have their own standards, you know, there's, like I said, guests, guest quarters have nine sets of standards, temporary offices have seven, temporary construction offices have seven, and so each of these individually have their own performance standards that they need to meet, so I kept going back and forth on whether or not they were actually discretionary or ministerial. And if you make the decision that they're ministerial, I would say that you probably don't need to provide this automatic, you know, appeal. If you make the finding discretionary, then I think that needs to be there.
Well, I, like I said, I think smaller projects would make sense for anything than other than that, it needs to come before the planning commission. I guess what it comes down to is the language that's provided is sufficient for us to recommend that type of system, I mean, is it spelled out clearly for everybody and you're left forgetting, because it's not, and either or, right? You want something that sort of allows both to happen reasonably, right?
Kevin, I don't know if each and every case is going to have a solid line, I think it's going to have to be some common sense in there.
Well, ultimately, the ax falls on the community development director or the person who approves, approves the, or disproves, right?
Right.
Right? So this is sort of giving that department the ability to shield themselves a little bit, I would think, but I will admit, I'm vacillating, I'm, I like the process the way it is, I think it gives the public ample time to respond, to appeal, to oppose, to debate, I think that's a good thing, 10 days is pretty short, is pretty short, but it does make sense for very small projects.
Yes.
So, if there's a way we can classify that.
I think in the case of zoning permits, I mean, these are all relatively small projects.
They're pretty well defined.
Very well defined, you know, if you meet, if you meet this, this, and this, it's approved, if it doesn't meet that, then it's not approved. As opposed to minor architectural design reviews where there's a bit more discretion, even minor exceptions, you know, where we've been granted, you know, a 10% reduction in the standard or, what's the other one? That even shoreline development permits, there's more discretion. I would argue that the zoning permits, it may, it's not going to hurt, I don't think that there's been any, I looked just briefly, there hasn't been any appeals in the past 10 years, it's something you have to pass a zone.
Okay, well, so what about this idea, I'm just going to throw it out there, you know, the recommendation for being flexible on requirements of applicants to come in to meet for pre-approval, leaving that flexibility for, or encouraged to, maybe we get around that by making it mandatory so that even if it is a small project, at least they have face-to-face with the community development director and they can make that determination face-to-face and have that signature with the information verbatim so that everybody knows what's to be expected and then at the time of the face-to-face, even if it's a small one, if there has to be a dispute with a neighbor or what have you, it can be automatically forwarded to the planning commission, at least we'll know.
I'm sorry, are we getting the pre-application process confused with the notification process here?
The land use application process. Land use application process currently is suggested to have proponents encouraged to request a application conference, okay, so at the time of application, small or large, instead of having it a request, have them show up and say, hey, you know, that way everybody knows upfront, there to be some information given, 10 days can be, for small projects, here's our reasoning for it, if there's a dispute, this is the actions that can be taken, and if this doesn't meet what we believe to be a fast-tracked item, we're just telling you right now, we're going to kick this up to the planning commission. That way it protects you and still gives everybody the opportunity to present their information if it has to come this way, so I'm not sure.
If we send a notice out and we don't get any contact, anybody comes back to talk to us, it's approved, basically.
Yeah, I don't know that the pre-application process, I mean, certainly it's going to, you know, assist the applicant understanding it, but these notices are for...
The neighbors. Yeah, I know, I know.
I can go either way, I didn't mean to put to, I mean, just, in thinking about it, these are, this particular section, zoning permits kind of dance a line between whether or not they're even discretionary to be given, so I didn't... So I didn't want to inadvertently, you know, be creating, you know, kind of, you know, doing the opposite of what I'm intending to do, which is, you know, provide, you know, reasonable transparency in making it, and then in, in a little bit, all of a sudden now we have a slew of zoning permits that get appealed up to the planning commission in the way the process is. I, I don't see that happening, but I, I hope that it, it does it. At the same time.
In the spirit of streamlining our processes instead of making them more difficult, I don't think, I think we should have faith in our community development director to have the wisdom to be able to make that determination. Period. End of story.
And, and sometimes, you know, we, we have this note, you know, we're talking about noticing everybody immediately next door, neighbors and stuff. And sometimes what happens is the neighbor comes in, talks to a planner, looks at the plans and says, oh, that's fine. It's not automatically going to be going to the planning commission for.
Just because it responded.
Yeah, just because somebody responded. It's going to be, okay, here's the issues. Can we resolve them at, at a, um, staff level? And that's always good. So, you know, I, I think that's kind of maybe answering some of your questions here.
Any, any other comments or?
I just have one. I had, what was, what was the thinking behind the ten days instead of maybe fifteen days?
If just consistent with what we have found other jurisdictions.
So most of the other jurisdictions.
At a, at a ten-day period. But it's, it's, I don't see it as being a problem to, you just don't want it to be too long and you don't want it to be too short. And that's where the ten days kind of came into play.
Is there a general consensus that it's okay? Ten days is good?
Consensus, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so do we have, oh, is there any other questions? If you want to cut anybody short, if you've got anything else. I have a call for a motion.
Honorable Chair, I motion for, let's see, make sure I got the right one here.
This is your issue?
Yeah. I move that the planning commission find that the proposed zone change text amendment, parentheses CZ fifteen dash oh four, is not a project as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sequel guideline section fifteen three seventy-eight B, and further that this action is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sequel guideline section fifteen three oh five. You have to be separate, right?
All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Wicks. Do I have a second?
Oh, second, then.
I have a second by Commissioner Taylor.
Commissioner Russell?
Here? Aye.
Commissioner Popper?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Wick?
Aye.
Chair Keener?
Aye.
All right, that one passes. Uh, how about the, uh, motion for the zone change?
Honorable Chair, I move that the planning commission recommend city council approval of Lakeport zoning ordinance text amendment, parentheses CZ fifteen dash oh four, as applied for by the city of Lakeport, subject to findings listed in the staff report dated December nine, two thousand and fifteen.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wicks. Do I have a second?
All second motion.
I have a second by Commissioner Russell. I have a.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Popper?
Aye.
Commissioner Wick?
Aye.
Chair Keener?
Aye.
And that one is passed. Moving on to the, the next on the agenda, AutoZone AR one four dash one one, TM one four dash zero one, ZC one four dash zero one, VA one four dash zero one, and LL eight one four dash zero one. And, Kevin? Kevin, something, okay?
Uh, did everybody get a chance to, um, take a look at the last minute comments that you guys received or if you guys want to take your couple minutes, uh, look at that or you want to go ahead and just start?
You mean the letters?
The letters, yeah. Well, and, and yeah, there's a letter from Big Valley Rancheria, and then there was also an email that, um, that Linda provided regarding some comments from the Pier nineteen, um, nineteen hundred homeowners association. I just want to make sure that you guys had a chance to read those.
I didn't see that.
No, I didn't see that one either.
No? She just handed my address to Sam.
I got the Big Valley one.
All right, anybody need more time? All right, Kevin?
All right. Before I go too far into this, I'd like to first just note that the representative property owner, as well as the project engineer are both here to answer questions, um, under commission, um, after my report. And then I'd also just like to thank them for their incredible patience on this project. They kind of, this, this application was submitted more than two years ago. Um, they, it's a complicated application in its own right. I mean, it's going to take time to process, but they kind of belied them to some staffing changes and turnover here. If this, this project has passed through four different planners' hands, um, and also three separate city engineers. So I just wanted to, to thank them once again for their patience on it. This is a multifaceted project. It consists of several interrelated components, principally a tentative map proposing to divide this property into eight acre parcel into four, and then also an architectural design review for the construction of an approximately eight thousand square foot new retail building upon the proposed parcel number one. To accomplish this, the project would also require the approval of some additional permits. These are a zone change, uh, for proposed parcel one from its current zoning of industrial to C two, uh, major retail, to permit the other parts distributed retail operation at this site. Uh, the project also includes a lotline adjustment to correct the existing, uh, building that is over the property, over the shared property boundary between this project site and two ninety-two Industrial Avenue. There's also a variance request, uh, requesting an additional fifty square footage of building mounted signage for the project, um, proposed parcel one, and the approval of mitigated negative declaration based on the recommended, recommended mitigations found in the sequel environmental review. The staff report covers each of these in turn and, um, and they have prepared recommendations and findings for each of these proposed applications, um, in addition to references to conditions, uh, that may be required for each of them. Those conditions were reviewed by both the property owner and the applicant, and they've agreed to an interim. Formally, the planning commission is not being asked to approve the lotline adjustment application this evening. Um, it's, it's provided to you guys because it is kind of ancillary to the, the proposal for the tentative map. What you'll see in your motion regarding that is the sort of direct planning staff to complete that lotline adjustment prior to the recordation of the tentative map. Additionally, the planning commission is not being asked to approve the zoning, uh, change, but rather to make a recommendation to the city council, who will have the ultimate authority on, um, their, you guys are making a recommendation on its consistency with the general plan and, and subdivision map act and, and zoning ordinance. But you are approving the tentative map, or you're being asked to approve the tentative map architectural design review, um, you're, you're taking action on the variance and the other applications. However, when this has to go to the city council for their review of the zoning change, they have it within their power to review any of your decisions on these other applications as they relate to that zoning change. So you're, you're making approvals, but this whole entire project will go, go a full review by the city council automatically. Okay, so let's, let's take a look at each of these individually. In regards to the zone change, um, this is only affecting proposed parcel number one, where the AutoZone proposal is to be located. This project is, uh, currently, uh, designated by the general plan as major, as, as major retail, and then with a zoning designation of, of industrial. Some history on that, this, uh, this property was annexed into the city probably in the late seventies, early eighties with the Kmart property in that area. At that time, both the, um, the zoning and the general plan designations were industrial. The general plan was changed to major retail with the adoption of the general plan in two thousand and nine. Um, and doing the background research on that, there's not anything specifically in the general plan specific to the site other than the land inventory analysis that was done with the background report for the general plan discussed the fact that over timeline of the general plan's life, that there was a need for additional retail. It also noted that there was a need for industrial areas, but the, the need for commercial retail areas was, was, uh, pretty substantial. And, um, I believe that to be the reason that that designation changed. The zoning ordinance, however, still remains industrial, thus requiring your, your review of the zoning change, of the zoning to, um, C two. The tentative parcel map, um, the applicant in, in this today has also provided an updated tentative map that was placed on, you guys can test there, in eleven by seventeen. That, um, that update reflects a lot of the change, a lot of the conditions of approval already in there, um, in regards to reorienting road and, and some other items there. So they just wanted, they felt that they wanted to show in good faith that they are, you know, moving forward with some of those conditions. Creates four parcels, two of which are already developed. Parcel three, uh, contains the Navy Marine operation. Parcel two, I believe, is, it's parcel two that houses the old, um, Rzika operation building where there's a, it's not vacant right now, it's being utilized temporarily for something in regards to the Ballard Fire, and I don't know what, what operation is temporarily being housed there, but if you went by it, you didn't notice that there were a lot of vehicles, trucks parked there. But it will be on its own independent parcel, and then the property along the north side is vacant. At the recommendation of the city engineer, um, he requested that we remove the requirement for the provision of sidewalk along that north side until such time that a development came in, and then we would actually know where driveways and other things would be located. So the road improvements would need to be put in, the full turnaround, uh, consistent with emergency, um, personnel and our, our subdivision ordinance would be required to put in, but only a curb and gutter would be there, uh, is being recommended for that north side of property. There are several mitigations in regards to, uh, stormwater, but that was sort of a, a big provision of this. Um, and you also got that letter from the Pier nineteen hundred homeowners association who are across from this project on the other side of Main Street, between the site and Clear Lake. Existing right now, when the Kmart proposal went in, there are three forty-eight inch storm drainage culverts that, um, exist along the southern boundary of this proposed project. They convey stormwater from the Kmart site and then also from the, um, the creek, um, the upper watershed of this unnamed creek, um, on the other side of the highway. And all that is conveyed through there and it exits out to Duvern, and as their letter indicates, they get a lot of sediment built up there. They've requested that, um, your commission consider some sort of sediment basin be, um, required as part of the project. Staff's not recommending that at this, they're, the, um, as proposed, this project will actually improve the, um, the amount of runoff, the volume of runoff from the site, um, as this project contributes to it. So we don't think that it's fair to, to have them be responsible for some of this other sediment that's probably coming from the upper water stream. This project will include as part of the AutoZone proposal, an underground water detention facility to capture the runoff from the impervious surfacing and then meter that out, um, which you see kind of consistent with a lot of new development. So it's designed to meter stormwater out, not all at once during a large rain event, but over time. And, um, and then also the other drainage improvements, our city engineer reviewed them very carefully, um, so that all the drainage that's currently on the north side of property flows to some culverts and an inlet to the north, and then everything on the south side still flows into these, into this culvert that exits through the Pier nineteen hundred. He was very diligent in making sure that that drainage pattern is maintained. Biological issues, this, um, the, I guess it'd be the western side of this property, the drainage facility that's there is open. It, uh, is a, uh, unnamed water stream that comes under the Caltrans right away there and is next to the school property that's on the other side there. We're requiring or requesting a thirty-foot setback being maintained, there is some right of vegetation that exists over there, and we're requesting that be maintained. We're, we're requesting all easements to be, uh, properly noted, and the applicant has agreed to granting us additional easements to allow for better ease of getting city equipment in if we ever needed to clear out some of the drainage, um, along the northern property boundary or at that, um, open portion of the channel at the, uh, southeast corner of the property. You also got some comments in there in regards to, um, from Big Valley Rancheria. I'll apologize directly for that. We discovered today that they, doesn't look like they physically got a notice when this project was first circulated over two years ago. That's not what we want to be doing. All our new projects certainly go to them, and so I, I do, I do apologize for that, and you guys should give some consideration to some of the recommendations that they're, that they're considering. Linda, did you, did you provide copies to the applicant of Big Valley's commons?
Yeah.
Okay. So that, that may be something we want to take up on. There are representatives from Big Valley Rancheria here this evening. I'm sure they can, they speak to any questions that you guys have. In regards to the architectural review and design, um, we've, uh, after a substantial review, um, we found that this is substantially consistent with city standards, adequate parking, there's some proposed landscaping in there. Lighting conditions, you saw that we have, uh, this general discrepancy between our general plan, uh, language and our current zoning language, uh, where the zoning, where the general plan urges parking lighting not to exceed eighteen feet. Our zoning ordinance doesn't have a specific limit on that, um, and we've requested that those lights be, uh, be reduced down to eighteen to be consistent with the general plan. The applicants agreed with that. The sign variance is the only real issue where staff has with the project. The submitted variance request seeks an additional fifty square feet of building mounted signage beyond what the zoning ordinance currently allows. The zoning ordinance allows, uh, for maximum signage at this location of one freestanding sign, not to exceed twenty-five feet in height with, um, a total of one hundred square feet between two faces, and that's exactly what they're proposing. They're proposing a twenty-five foot high sign with two fifty-square-foot sign faces. The, the zoning, or the, the variance application in regards to the building mounted signage, which, um, our ordinance, because it is a corner lot, would allow two signs to be placed, but those two signs cannot exceed a total of fifty square feet. They're requesting a, um, uh, to exceed that by an additional fifty square feet. Uh, staff disagrees with the assessment that, um, made by the applicant in regards to the additional signage is necessary to maintain a fair competition balance between the signage of the O'Reilly's Auto Parts store next door. When, um, staff audited how much signage that, that facility has, although they're in the same zoning district, their allowances are different, um, because that falls within a shopping center category, so there's different sign allowances. But at the end of the day, um, the O'Reilly's Auto Parts store has approximately a hundred and fifty square feet of total signage between their building mounted and their freestanding sign, and that would be what is allowed for the, um, for the proposed AutoZone site as well. The ratios are just slightly different. O'Reilly's has larger building mounted signage and a smaller freestanding sign. So the ratios are slightly different, but at the end of the day, staff felt that the total amount of signage is equal, and, uh, as such, we're, we're recommending to the your commission, uh, deny the variance. And as such, we're recommending to your commission deny the variance. Overall, staff pleased us to be a good project with the incorporation of the mitigation measures recommended in the environmental review and initial study and other project conditions explained in the staff report. This project is consistent with the Lakeport general plan, zoning ordinance and other applicable unit code sections, and staff has recommended approval. I did also want to state I had a conversation today, and this has come up a little bit a couple of times, there's some controversy that's been expressed in regards to the appropriateness of locating a like business next to an identical type of business. Our zoning ordinance doesn't have any provisions that address, that address that sort of facet. And if you look at some other type of industries, you'll see fast food restaurants typically clustered together. Auto malls tend to, you know, you'll see several in the same location. And regionally, you'll see auto parts stores located right next to each other in other areas in the region. With that, I did have a conversation with the owner of the Lake Auto Parts store, the Napa Auto Parts store. And they just said that they, you know, they, they have some concerns with, with the fact that the corporation's moving in and kind of pushing some of these other independent donors out. It does have an effect on local business and she wanted to express that. When the AutoZone parts store went into the city of Clear Lake, for instance, she noted that that Napa Auto Parts store, which is an independent franchise, was pushed out of business. They, our, the Lakeport actually acquired that one, but she wanted to note for the record that there was some concerns that they had with, with these corporations coming in and your commission to kind of consider that impact upon some of the smaller distributors. That's all I have. Like I said, the applicant and property owner, representative property owner, if you're to answer questions as well.
All right. Let's open it up to the commissions.
You're asking questions, Ross, or did you?
No, they're getting ready to ask questions.
I just have a question on page fourteen of your staff report. The building's going to be raised four feet. Is that going to be fill or is that the foundation and fill combined?
It's filled. I'm sure the foundation probably will be a small portion of it, it's primarily filled.
So there's going to be four feet of fill over?
Next to, currently this property is within the flood zone. To get out of that, be consistent with building code requirements requires approximately four feet of fill.
Okay, so that's going to change the elevation right there.
It's consistent, actually, if you, if you know along the southern boundary, the drainage culverts that are there, there's actually a mound in order to maintain that elevation. So that's kind of, that site will be elevated almost consistent with what you're seeing there.
Okay. Okay, on underground utilities, on page fifteen. G. Says underground each of your parts, overhead lines on either side of peripheral streets. Not much of a peripheral street. Is this south Main Street a peripheral street or?
You're on page fifteen?
Yeah.
Page eighteen.
It's essentially the, that's the text.
That's the text directly from the subdivision ordinance. So all existing, per se, subdivision on peripheral streets. I think that would be any street that's not the main street of the development, so if there's any side streets in this one. This being a corner lot, there really aren't any peripheral streets.
One of my concerns was that on South Main Street, on both, you know, developed corners there, Industrial Avenue, there are poles in the sidewalk, two on the AutoZone side, one's a telephone, one's a power pole. There's a telephone pole, probably a power pole on Lakeport Tire side. It's all likely to be undermounded as part of this project.
Yeah, it's just going to, as proposed right now, it's just going to be the frontage there along industrial. This side, I'd have to double check, may already be in the undergrounding utility district for the South Main Street, so they wrote corridor improvement project, which includes the unincorporated area and then there's a, like a three-hundred-foot section within the city limits that's supposed to be undergrounded as well.
Well, you know, when the city redid that street only like three or four years ago or something, they ended up filling in all the open ditches and putting drainage in there and then used the opportunity to underground a whole mess. So now we have telephone poles and another sidewalk, just like the left street and a lot of other pieces, so. Limited handicapped access and.
Yeah, it's bad design. It's bad.
I'm just wondering if we can partially correct that or not.
Well, you certainly have the permission to request the applicant.
But it'd be onerous on the applicant to fix a mess that the city created.
Well, but if I may to chime in on that, one of the questions that I had asked of the director earlier had to do with a street lamp, which there are none. And, and my recommendation is going to be, as we have this conversation, is to include a provision, a street lamp for that intersection simply because it's new improvement, it's a, and it's in the dark, if everyone's been driving through there, it's, it's black. So that needs to be addressed. If that were the case, maybe that's the opportunity to do a relocation of a pole or to supply not only the street lamp, but to alter the current orientation. Just throwing it out there.
Kevin, on, on the project, on the north side of industrial where Lakeport Tire is, now you're going to have, on the south side, we're going to have curb gutter and sidewalk. And it says we're going to have a forty-foot street from, that would be from the curb to over to Lakeport Tire. Where does that determine the point of where the edge of his, where he parks his cars going to be on that side of that project?
That, that was a big concern of our city engineer. And I mean, that's, and we sat down with the project engineer and they went over specifically and, and Bob Lyle, who's the, the engineer for the project, may, did that get addressed? Is it shown on the, the, the map that we have right now? If you look at the tentative map that he provided to us this evening, it shows the existing buildings there and it's also showing that new edge of sidewalk, or new edge of curb conform and everything right there.
Good evening, Bob Lyle, our engineering. Yeah, Kevin's exactly right. What, what we're doing here with this project to the north of us, the existing tire store is to match the existing flow line on the north side that flows down across this property towards South Main Street. And we are, you know, keeping the drainage in the same, same pattern as, as it is today. But, you know, I understand that the tire store does park their cars in, in front of their bays, their service bays, and they will continue to be able to do that. That, that is no problem. That is, that was a concern that we talked about with the city for some time and it will remain that way. So, one of the questions that came up, I think, about the undergrounding of the electric, there is overhead power along Industrial Avenue and I think one of the conditions in the, condition number sixty-two.
We're going to have to open this up before we're going to do this. So why don't we get our stuff done? I thank you, but let's get it up before we open it up to everybody else. Let's make sure we do that. Thank you. Any more for just Kevin or Dan?
Ross has got some more. Well, in the meantime, I have a question regarding one of the, one of the conditions mentions that staff had talked about an alternative awning or materials to an alternative. What was that? What, what were the alternatives?
If you look at the, the building elevations, our special project consultant, one of our apprentice who was working on set downtime, that the project includes an awning over the two public entries. It was a recommendation that was made by our special project consultant to perhaps consider the placement of just a small awning over the service side entry to match that as well. And then that would perhaps break up some of the, the linear building face as well.
Keep the water.
We, yeah, it has the other added effect of keeping water out of that area. We did not require that as a condition, it just was sort of a suggestion. I mean, it did seem like it was fully necessary to, to meet our architectural design guidelines, but certain, within the purview of your commission to consider it and that's why we left it in there as a, as a suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess since we talked about awning on page twenty-three, are there metal awnings? Present metal awnings or not recommended?
Correct.
No, we're, we're.
I know they're recommended in this project.
That's what I was referring to.
But maybe you should change the, you know, the ordinance or whatever it is or what the city is.
On the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was asking, because at the bottom of the condition of approval, since staff has recommended another similar awning over the service door. So in reference to metal, it's not recommended, I was a little confused as to what you were recommending.
You're right. I mean, that, that should just, you know, it's, it's a suggestion, not a, that recommendation. Sorry to catch that in staff report. Yeah, and, you know, and, and this is exactly what it says here about the metal awnings. I mean, they're, they're not recommended, but this is, we get in the, the land of recommending, you know, the shoulds versus the shalls. So in, in looking at this, it seemed to fit with the building design, so.
Yeah. We're comparing, you don't have to replace them.
Well, from a design standpoint, I think it would definitely enhance the look of the building.
To add the, to add the.
It would help the design appeal in general.
Clock awnings or?
No, no, no.
No, just the one over the service area that he's talking about. The additional awning recommendation.
Still looking?
Keep going.
Okay, well, while he's still going, there's a, let's see, I guess it'd be page twenty-eight at the bottom, provisions for washing and cleaning of buildings. And it says it is unclear if provisions for the cleaning of the building, control dirt debris have been provided for. Have they been provided for or not? Okay, thank you. Not provided.
From the bottom of twenty-nine and top of thirty on the planting of the trees and water drainage, has that been resolved?
It still shows on your landscaping plan, they have trees there, but we're, as a condition of approval, we're, you're recommending that those trees be removed from the placement over those drainage pitches. You know, it's, it's not that you can't place landscaping there, it's just we encourage it not to be anything that has, has deep roots that are going to somehow affect the performance of those pipes.
Falling in.
Falling in. The other thing to keep in mind too, is you have, in regards to the Kmart property along there, that shared boundary there, there's a large line of pine tree, I think they're pine or, they're not redwood, they're pine.
They're pines.
To perform a break there. So I'm not sure what the effect of any trees back there, there's no visual side to that building. I mean, if you have landscaping up along the front of South Main, it was staff's opinion that that was adequate to shield that side building together with the existing line of pine trees that make up that boundary. So we, we took a look at it and didn't think it was worth the risk of perhaps undermining the performance of a stronger effect.
Just a small correction on the bottom, page thirty-five. Building mounted thousands of foot sign.
Go. Drop to zero.
Oh, there's a grammar correction, but I don't know if it's that important. Page fourteen, it's section sixteen, eighteen oh one oh general, says both onsite and onsite in accordance with, I'm not sure if it's supposed to be offsite.
Yes.
Okay. Always good to double check.
If we could go back to page twenty-nine, landscaping. Spent a lot of time on trees and I think the landscape architect did a great job. And the prospect of putting twenty-three fifteen gallon trees in for the project is good because our code only calls for ten, or four, one for every ten parking places, which is, I'd like to address that at another time because it's not adequate. My, one of my concerns is that we've talked, in this paperwork, it talks about the shade that's provided for the cars and the laurels themselves are kind of a moderate growing tree. I mean, it's a perfect tree for the location, but it's, I think it will take about ten, fifteen years for it to provide any kind of shade for any, any trees. And I was wondering if, and this is a suggestion, I don't know the cost differences, et cetera. I didn't get any calls back today to put in larger than fifteen gallons trees just to be able to give it a, another jump start, you know, give us, give us another five plus years.
Just on the laurels?
Well, I'd like to see it on the crepe myrtles. I mean, the crepe myrtles are, I think, the perfect Lakeport sun tree. I mean, lots of people put them in, everybody loves them. They have, statistically, they have the longest blooming period of any tree. So they're terrific. I'd like to see the laurels with the, with the crepe myrtles on the plants, but that's, that's up to the designer. But in, in general, I think it's, it's terrific that you stepped up in our putting in more trees than are required by Congress. Let's hit, thanks.
One other thing, page twenty, on your, yes, no, non-applicable, the first, first one there? You have non-applicable for the, the post-building incrementality consistent with scale form proportion. Wouldn't that be yes? Unless you're just comparing it to the bare lot.
Yeah, I think this is in regards to if there's an existing building at that site.
At that site or in the general neighborhood?
Well, in the median area, whether it's harmonious with buildings, the other area, they're.
Right, yeah. There's two other buildings on each side and I would say yes, but.
Well, it's us. It's to you specifically.
I would say yeah.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that as well. Seems to me like yes would be the more appropriate response to that because it is talking about the general area. the general area. Because if it's not applicable, then that just, that just makes sense.
Yeah. Ah, the cul-de-sac really doesn't come up in this part of it?
In this part of it?
I don't think it. You know, the environmental study, initial study and review, you know, we talked about cul-de-sac, there was drawing, says the fifty-foot radius and all that kind of stuff. And then there's reference to a hundred and fifty foot, which is a seventy-five foot radius. The new revised plan is show the seventy-five foot radius.
Right, but the tentative plan that provided originally says fifty radius, and there's language that references fifty.
And there's, you know, the.
Yeah, yes.
In the initial study, it talks about a hundred and fifty foot is the condition diameter, and there's also a fifty in there.
But what does the condition say?
I think the condition's, I think the condition say a hundred.
Yeah, I think it do.
Thirty-six, right?
Yeah, thirty-six.
Thirty-six, reference is page forty. Yeah. So reference is page forty-six, but in page thirty-six, you talk about a fifty-foot radius?
Page thirty-five, I think.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
Oh, condition number thirty-six.
Yeah, condition number thirty-six, but it's on page thirty-five.
Yeah, and this, this is an area where when, when our new C engineer came on board, it took a, took a newer look at it, and the condition is, is what we're requesting. So the amendment would need to be made to the initial set.
Right.
I just want, yeah.
Yeah, because now the map, the map, you know, shows, shows the right radius. I assume it has to be over that large truck.
Can we even fire truck?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah. Is there only one fire hydrant for that whole area?
Two.
Is there two?
There's, yeah, there's condition language that requesting the additional, addition of the.
In the southeast.
Correct. And that's probably shown in your.
Oh, I see it now, yeah.
Map as well.
Is that a request?
No.
Or a requirement?
It's conditioned.
And that, that is reflected in the revised kind of map you have.
I see it, yeah. Is that it for the? For the staff or for staff?
I don't have an awning system.
Whatever, you open it up.
Well, let me just, just for the benefit of perhaps the property owner and the engineer, let me just see if I've got all these issues, these substantive issues that you guys covered here. So we want to discuss street light at the intersection of industrial and South Main Street, undergrounding of utilities on Main Street, sidewalk design and conform of the proposed road with the existing tire business across the street, the potential of an awning over the service area entry on the building, and then perhaps the requirement larger than fifteen gallon trees on landscaping that cover the.
I don't know if we need to make it a requirement there, but I, I'd like to see it as a request.
I just want to make sure, I think I've got all.
And also, we talked earlier, I'm not sure which side of the street is, there's parking? Is there, did they, did you decide if that was going to be an issue? And I'm thinking specifically the fire lane, fire access.
Oh, that's in regards to the building situation. There is no parking proposed for that travelway that, you know, along the north side of the building.
Okay.
Speaking of.
I was talking about industrial street.
On industrial and south.
Yeah, on industrial.
On, on the street itself, in front of the.
Right, because, I mean, the parking can be on either side of industrial, and I don't know whether or not it's better to have it on the AutoZone side or the other side.
I don't think you have any conditions prohibiting parking on either side there with the forty-foot line road.
There isn't? So you can park on both sides? Yeah, okay.
Will it be delineated?
I don't believe it's supposed to be delineated, like it is on Main Street.
Right.
Right.
Speaking of Main Street, thank you for answering the questions. As a recommendation, perhaps public boards could look at extending that white line that separates South Main Street from the actual sidewalk and parking spaces, maybe another fifty to seventy feet, simply because cars are really diving into the, into that section to take an early turnoff. Something to look at anyways.
Yeah, there's, there's kind of a whole realignment that goes on in that area that someday will be taken care of once we get moving forward with the South Main Street Sunday Road Board.
Right.
Right. Someday, it's the magic word.
So, yeah, I've seen cars get quite confused. I just want to make sure I completely covered it.
All right. Unless you guys have anything else, or go ahead and open it. All right, well, open up for public hearing, and if I can get either the owner or the engineer to come up first and, and answer some of the people's questions.
Good evening, Bob Eink, R of D Engineering, Mr. Chairman, Commission members, good evening. So, yeah, I'm the civil engineer on the project, just representing AutoZone in the development, and I'm here to answer any questions that they have. We've gone through the conditions of approval, which both the landowner and AutoZone have signed concurrently to show their support for the project and the conditions. I think one thing I just wanted to bring up on condition number thirty-seven, where it mentions dedicating an additional ten feet along South Main. I think, Kevin, we had that discussion where no additional right-of-way would be required at this point, and just kind of, maybe just some housekeeping to, to keep that clean and, and eliminate any confusion in the future.
For, for the planning commission's benefit, this, this condition was made, and then the applicant asked whether or not that had been already completed with the previous improvements, and we confirmed the city engineer that it had. So that, that provision can require additional ten feet along Main should be, should be taken out. It's already been dedicated.
So number thirty-seven, introduce it.
There was a discussion question regarding the, the overhead power and telephone and so forth. There, there is overhead power and telephone along the south side of Industrial Avenue right now, and plan would be to underground that with the, with the development. So I don't know if that answers your question, Commissioner, but that, that was the intent, and that's what both the property owner and AutoZone agreed to.
My question was, is it going to be underground from the feet of that telephone pole there, or the two telephone poles that are the sidewalk, come down and then?
At, at the corner of South Main and Industrial?
Or from across the street or, or north on South Main?
You know, that's, I don't know the answer to that. As far as the, the precise design and how that would work out, I imagine that would be a detail we could work out with the city and with the.
It looks like the phone, the phone feet from our, our phone pole that's on the north corner by Lakeport Tire.
And that's where we've got to probably be careful, because we can't require them to be responsible for, for those offsite improvements, but there may be some areas where.
And I think the power for PGV comes from across the east side of the street.
Poles.
Of course, and it's at a high voltage line.
And maybe that there's a drop there, right there on the corner of, of South Main and Industrial, and from, from that point going west, it would be underground.
Yeah, it looks like the power, you know, is high voltage coming to, to the north, south side of.
Right.
That corner.
Right.
The transformer's down Industrial Avenue, down there by Office Building.
That's right.
Parking, so I don't know if you put a transformer there at the front of the van, or how you distribute that.
Yeah, that would be a detail that we would work out, and probably from that, from that joint pole there at the corner, like you mentioned, dropping it down underground and going west and tying that for the rest of the, the development.
It would give your building more visibility.
It will, yes.
And it would solve a problem with people coming in and not being able to see in and out.
Correct.
Other questions?
I just want to say that you guys have gone there several miles on studies and.
Black line.
Engineering and design.
Yeah, normally we have.
I appreciate that. Sort of, I appreciate being over in Dallas with everybody.
It's, you know, I was going to say, normally we're, we have dozens of questions because the answers need to be found, but these are, this is very well documented, so there's not a whole lot that can't be disturbed from it. So I'll dig in that.
Just wanted to, kind of respond to the Big Valley Rancheria letter as well. We just had a quick opportunity to review that, and, you know, I think conditions thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen speak to those concerns and requests in the letter already. But of course, that, you know, that can be heard later as well, but just wanted to kind of speak to that. It looked like the city had already taken decisions to accommodate any kind of archaeological findings out there during construction.
So I have one question regarding the actual decision-making as to this particular parcel. In our general plan, we have some directives that talk about, you know, available existing C2 properties. There are several that were available. What was the compelling argument for this particular parcel that needs to be rezoned as opposed to other parcels that were already so C2?
You know, AutoZone does a lot of homework before they come into a community. They, you know, they're very excited about coming into Lakeport. You know, that, it's a good question. There's a lot of different factors involved as far as, you know, it's the location, location, location is always very important. And of course, the zoning, what is the process of going through a rezone if, if indeed that's the right location for their, for their property? You know, I, I can't answer the exact details of how it was arrived. I know there's a relationship already with the property owner, and they've worked together over the last couple of years to try to make this work, and they just find that particular location is well suited for them. And, you know, they do a lot of homework before they even decide to pull us engineers in and get us working on it, but they do consider this a very good location for them.
Thank you.
So, yeah, it, you know, I think normally they'd want to go with a process that's less, you know, time-consuming to take, but they feel this, this is an opportunity for them to, to take advantage of this property.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Do you have a problem with the sign as far as the square footage?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to take that back to the AutoZone folks, and I'm sure that we can work something out.
Because I look at the one down in Clearlight, and at night, the, the sign that they have, I don't know if that's the same size as what you proposed.
It's very similar, very similar to it, yes.
And that building, at night, with the AutoZone in red, it stands out, so you wouldn't need a really large sign on this one. Everyone's going to know your location, they're going to see that building, the AutoZone's going to be bright. I, I think you could live with a smaller sign.
Yeah, they'll probably need to go back to the, the sign division that they have there, and we can work with staff to work out something on that.
Well, another thing is, is that we're not talking about highway exit, where you would need a huge monument sign. You've got a destination building.
Right.
Business, and that signage is bright, and there's going to be no doubt about it when people are going on our, our streets. I mean, this isn't exactly a metropolis. We don't have any stoplights.
Right.
You know, so it's, it's small, it will be noticed, everybody knows, everybody can see, and I think that's a little overkill.
I think it's also important to note, too, I think there was some confusion by the sign engineer. They were at one point thinking that they could not have two building-mounted signs, and after further investigation, you know, we noted, the provision for a second sign isn't listed in our code, that actually is a resolution adopted by your planning commission as a resolution of interpretation. So I, I do think that there's room that they're, that they're going to be somewhat okay with, with the reduced amount of signage. I think their biggest concern was whether or not they could have a second building-mounted sign, and after some clarification with them and, and knowing that they can have that second sign, I think that hopefully will ease some of that concern. It's just not going to be of a size that they originally wanted to see, that they were proposing, a sixty-six square foot sign on one frontage and a thirty-three square foot sign on the other frontage.
Well, as Commissioner Wicks pointed out, there's, it's dark out there. We don't have a street light. We need a street light, but that's the only thing you're going to see is AutoZone.
It's a good point. I mean, I think, I think it's a good point about the, the light at the intersection as well. I think, for safety purposes.
For safety purposes, exit, yes. I think it's necessary, and it won't diminish your sign brilliance.
Was there a reason for your street or your parking lamps to be twenty-five foot instead of eighteen?
You know, I, I think that's typically what they, they use. I did notice that, you know, there's an eighteen foot limit on that, and, you know, they, they will have to go through a new foot metric layout to make sure that they've got the right foot handles and so forth, but, you know, it probably would be just a closer spacing of, of their, their street lights, and maybe a couple more that they'll need to add as a result. But that, that was a, I, I did see that comment, and I relayed that on to AutoZone as well, that, that will have to be accommodated.
Okay. On condition two, we could talk about, should I, should we be denied, in a no case, the height of the lights then, killer, see twenty-five feet, so you give them an option?
No option.
Well, this is, this is where we have that imbalance between zoning laws and the general plan, so, I mean, I think this is kind of riding that line. I, I think it would make more sense to either make a definitive decision that they can't exceed eighteen or get rid of that a little. This is, this is my attempt, attempt to achieve some gray area that may have been done very.
Do you know how high the, the, the lights are over at O'Reilly and that area?
I do not, off the top of my head, you know, if those exceed the eighteen. This, the eighteen foot standard came out of the two thousand nine general plan update that wasn't present in the general plan prior to that, so my guess is very likely that those lights probably do exceed that eighteen foot. This is my attempt to achieve some gray area that may have been done very...
Do you know how high the lights are over at O'Reilly and that area?
I do not, off the top of my head, you know, if those exceed the eighteen. The eighteen-foot standard came out of the 2009 general plan update that wasn't present in the general plan prior to that, so my guess is very likely that those lights probably do exceed that eighteen-foot. I have to trust, probably that was positive, but I haven't physically measured.
I have a question regarding the orientation of Industrial Avenue. Just sort of struck me just a second ago when looking at it. There's a slight northeastern bend in this.
Yes.
So the question, not why, I understand why, but my question is more traffic safety is to the condition of looking to the right and the additional...
Yeah, you know, this has been kind of studied and reviewed and discussed at length here as well, and not to get into the history of it, but the skew is, you know, noticeable on plan. I think in reality, in the field, and when someone approaches the intersection along Industrial, looking left and right to exit, I don't think there's gonna be a noticeable, you know, problem with sight distance or anything like that.
So the orientation of a car park looking to turn to the left, say going north, is not gonna have more of a problem with orientation to the south?
No, I don't think, I mean, you will notice it slightly, but I don't think it'll be a measurable difference. I think you'll be able to see the traffic. You know, South Main is a fairly wide street, and I just, I came from there before the meeting here as well, and I stood at that intersection looking both ways as well, and kind of kept the same thought kind of ran through my mind, you know, is this going to really be altered in any way as far as sight distance and decision-making going out into the intersection? I don't think it will be noticeable, you know, in the end.
That's consistent with what our city engineer found. He was pressing it pretty hard until he went out there and he came to the same conclusion. Because of the width of South Main, he didn't think that it was gonna cause any geometric issues in orientation.
Thank you.
And a lot of that's there to try and still accommodate the existing business across the street and maintain their ability to still park cars in front of their base, because otherwise you're being looking at needing to alter that area substantially.
That ties in with what I wanted to say. Oh, it says we're raising the building four feet. I was kind of wondering, number one, are there any kind of, like, retaining walls, little itty-bitty, to hold the landscaping?
Well, there is, we do have planned some landscape curving behind the sidewalk, which will, you know, it'll be six inches high, say, maybe a little bit higher, but just to accommodate, you know, the slope coming from the side down to the back of the sidewalk. There is a transition between, you know, the four-foot fill for the new building and down to the street, down to Industrial, and, you know, we do have some transition grades going down there, but essentially, it's gonna be accommodated by the throat depths from the parking lot into the street, and they'll be able to accommodate that.
Is the parking lot being raised along with?
Portions of it will be, yes. I mean, at the street, you know, of course, we'll have to match with the street elevation, but as you get onto the side, you will be ramping up, and I think the grades are maybe seven or eight percent, but the distance is fairly short. I mean, we're talking twenty, twenty-five feet.
Right.
And get up to the main parking lot there and drive aisle, it will be pretty close to the elevation of the building.
Considering our alneo possibilities, those sidewalks will be a mess to maintain if something isn't done substantially.
Yeah, and I think that was one of the discussions we had with staff as far as accommodating that with some raised curbs behind the sidewalk to prevent sloughing off from the landscape areas to the sidewalks. You'll see in areas where that isn't done, and you'll see, you know, constant silt buildup behind the sidewalks.
Mess.
And this actually is a good idea, I think, and AutoZone is okay with that, to provide that. It's a fairly common technique to try to prohibit, you know, staining or just dirt buildup on across the sidewalk.
What makes the building look a lot cut?
Right.
Are your sidewalks surrounding the building, are they six-foot wide?
They are, I believe they are five feet.
Five feet?
Yes. I mean, we need four feet minimum for accessibility purposes, but AutoZone likes to go five feet. It may be five and a half once you consider the six-inch-wide curb, but, you know, typically they go five feet.
Well, in the handicapped areas, you have the wheel bumpers, and you don't have them anywhere else, and most cars that I know of, they stick out pretty far from the wheel well to the front end of the car, which means to me that it's gonna be sticking into the sidewalk at least two and a half, three feet minimum, to hold two feet maybe to walk in.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the purpose of the wheel stop is to prevent the car from the overhang from the front wheel to the front of the car, which is typically about two feet, from overhanging into the sidewalk location. So, in this case here, that is the purpose of the wheel stops there, is to prevent the car overhang from someone parking too close to the sidewalk and, you know, inhibiting that walkway.
But there's none proposed for the parking spaces, the regular parking spaces. You just have them for the handicapped.
Yeah, and the regular parking spaces, yeah, oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, for the one on the corner...
For any of the parking spaces that are up against the sidewalk, you've got...
The handicap accessibility will be from the stalls to the main door.
Right.
But I could see where possibly you may want to have one just north of the handicap stall there.
Well, they need them on all the parking places. If you're gonna, you have a five-foot wide sidewalk, and you've got a two-and-a-half to three-foot overhang from where your tires are gonna hit, and there's no bumper there, trailer bumper at all proposed on any of these, then you're only gonna have this much space to walk in. No wheelchair, nobody, hardly anybody could get in behind that.
Yeah, you're right. It wouldn't be for accessibility purposes on the other parking stalls, because those are just standard parking stalls. The ones for the handicap parking, though, the path of travel from the handicap stalls to the front door, we would want to maintain that width, like you say, and I think the stall to the north of those handicaps, I could see that perhaps one may be required there in order to avoid that.
Just one?
Yeah, I think, well, the ones on the west side won't be used by a handicap...
I'm just talking people, regular people.
Understood. But the ADA access is really, I mean, for the specific clearances and widths have to do for the handicap and accessibility purposes for handicap people, and that's what we're trying to accommodate here.
You have, you've addressed that very well, but I'm talking about the rest of the rest of the people, because, and not only do I think you need bumps for each one of those parking places that are up against facing the building, but I would like to make a personal request, because I have one of those horrible cars that has about this much clearance, and I keep ripping, personally, well, I don't personally, my other half, and I both keep ripping off the front end of that car, and I mentioned it to a couple of the other folks, and they have the same problem, and I would like to request that hopefully you will put those bumpers in there to give us more sidewalk room.
It'll have to be just...
Low.
Understood. Yeah, I mean, the parking bumpers themselves are only about three and a half inches high, so, you know, obviously, most cars can get their wheels up against the parking bumper and the front bumper goes over it. As far as parking bumpers, I know most of the time AutoZone is reluctant to put them in only because of tripping hazards and the liability for that. I could see the case there on the handicap path of travel that we would need to maintain that width between the handicap stalls and the front door. As far as the other ones, you know, that would be something that I'd have to run by them. They may not be as agreeable to that only because of the liability concerns they have with bumpers. I mean, they have the bumpers there for the handicap stalls, which is very typical.
Right, two six-footers. You've got those, and that's really well covered. It's just the other...
I could bring those back to AutoZone and see what they say about it.
And if they don't want to do that, maybe they would consider making the sidewalk just a little wider?
Well, that's an option. I mean, and we've done that before where, you know, you make the sidewalk wider, and then, you know, even with the overhang, you still have an accommodating walkway there.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And, you know, that's something that we can work with staff on. We're trying to provide pretty much a city standard sidewalk or stall dimensions, and that is another option.
Right.
Because the curb would actually be your wheel stop, and you'd just widen.
Right, and that's fine. You know, I've got to go measure what the car is, because I thought that the engine from the wheel was a lot more than two, two and a half feet, guys? What do you think?
Mine depends.
Mine's a bit...
Less than two?
Yeah, it just depends. I do agree with you, though, on that, the further north parking stall next to handicap, that makes sense to put a bumper there simply because there's handicap access coming from the north around that corner. That would be more of a safety issue more than anything else, and it's a cheap fix to put in a little cement block in that little stall.
Agreed.
We're not talking a lot of expense here.
Well, maybe it makes sense that they don't have enough room to get all four rows of parking and do it.
Oh.
I think, I see your point, though, Commissioner. I think we could probably put in a wider sidewalk if the city is okay and staff is okay with, you know, an overhang, because right now, the stalls on the west side of the building are nine by nineteen, and, you know, let's say we do nine by seventeen, but then you have two additional feet on the sidewalk, that could solve the problem without moving, you know, anything else, the drive aisles or anything beyond that.
Whatever works, it's good.
Well, yeah, that'd be all right, because we can't extend it too far without then reorienting the whole parking area and reducing our size, you know?
Size, yeah.
There may be a little bit of flexibility down there.
Whatever's workable. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the engineer? All right, thank you very much.
Most true.
Does anyone else would like to speak on this? Please state your name, where you're from, and spell your last name if you could.
Okay, my name is Salwin Round. We are OWN Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for the Big Valley Rancheria band of Poma Indians. So I want to first off start by, it was brought to the attention of you all here by Kevin at the last minute notice of this project, the tribe finding out otherwise. I'm sure I'd have another few pages worth of recommendations for you guys, but these recommendations are gonna cover the initial study, the environmental review, and the staff report, and one of the concerns, again, and I know this will get worked out with Kevin, is the tribe has experienced this, and Kevin knows, being with the county for these issues, we've noticed, is being sent to the proper address is the response, and so I definitely want to work with Kevin to get that all straightened out, so we receive proper notice, it's coming to people, it needs to come due. We can review the projects and not hold up any of the processes that are going forward. So first off, I just want to mention that the entire city limit boundaries of the City of Lakeport are within the tribal Aboriginal boundaries of Big Valley, and so we are a primary contact for any projects that the city is gonna undertake, any development within the city, and I want that to be noted. I will provide maps to Kevin in the near future showing that, those boundaries, and in terms of any communication with the Native American Heritage Commission, I'm at a hundred percent that they'll designate the Big Valley as the most likely to send if human remains are discovered within the city of Lakeport. You guys did receive a copy of the comments prepared for the tribe. I'm wondering if you guys all understand those comments, or do I need to read those comments here?
No.
Or if there's any questions to those comments. One of the other things I want to mention here is, these comments are provided and recommended to strengthen the protection of cultural resources. I did review the reports listed and felt that these comments being incorporated help strengthen protection, and the tribe could better support this effort and the development going forward. These are standard mitigation recommendations for the tribe. If you guys have any questions regarding these recommendations, please feel free to give me any questions you have, any concerns you might have. One of the things, again, why we're looking to enter into an agreement with the AutoZone representatives is, there are other tribes within the tribal area here who may not have an interest within any of the things I've discussed, human remains, any of those types of things, and there's been instances in the past where outside tribes have been brought in to monitor projects within the county of Lake, not that no here in the city jurisdiction. So that's always a concern for the tribe, that we're on site, we're involved with any of the sites connected directly to the tribe. As the comments reflect here, there are eight prehistoric sites, four historic sites that are directly connected to the Big Valley tribe, and we do have great concern for the impact of those sites, which are adjacent, and through the archaeological study provided by the county, they're not able to determine that there's not gonna be any resources on the ground here, and so that's why the concerns are addressed, the recommendations are made on behalf of the tribe, that the tribe be directly involved with this project and have an agreement with the AutoZone representatives for this project. If there are any other questions, feel free to have any questions. I'm here for the remainder of the hearing if you guys would like to discuss any of this.
Do you guys have any questions?
I just, I have one.
Okay.
What is the basis of the agreement?
The agreement will outline a monitoring plan that the tribe will develop in cooperation with the developers, and that's something that'll be worked out, and how the monitoring's gonna take place when, one of the things I did try to do was contact the firm that did lead for it. I was unable to get any call back regarding questions I had that I wanted to direct to the consultant, and so I'm still gonna be following up those calls and trying to get more answers on any other questions I have. I was satisfied with the report. I think the report was well done, but very limited to what the possible materials that might come out of the ground, and there was no information within the report that said the consultant looked at the other sites that are within a half mile, and these are the items. So there's always a possibility anywhere here in Lake County within the city's limits that's close to the water to find burial grounds, and so those are our main concerns, is the burial grounds, and also the agreement will help the tribe have more say in what happens with those remains should that happen.
And this is a policy or a procedural thing that I feel strong about, you know, group work with the tribe. I did personally with, over at the county, we've gone through this, so we're, of course, a time of projects inadvertently not getting sent out, and that was when I came over here, something that we made sure that all of our projects are going out to both Big Valley and Scotts Valley, the two tribes that do have some territorial jurisdiction in our area. This one has been sitting here for a long time. I probably made the assumption that the cultural resources survey, and this is something I learned the hard way, that even though they're required, they're, you know, statutory a lot of times required to reach out to the tribes when they do these cultural resource surveys, they don't all the time, and so, you know, there's some onus on us as a department to make sure that these documents are laid forward to develop, and that's something in the future that definitely will be corrected. This project's sort of a remnant, it's been sitting for a couple of years, and it didn't get done, and I apologize to the tribe for that.
It's also another thing, the firm, the Area West Environmental, did the report, did not send any correspondence to the tribe, ask them for comments. The comments from the Heritage Commission are attached, the letter sent to the Heritage Commission asked who are the tribes we contacted, and that this was provided, but no correspondence to any of those contact information.
They're supposed to.
So as a follow-up question, then, if I may, item thirteen on the attachment, it says either a Native American Monitor and/or a qualified archaeologist. Who would the archaeologists be, or what would be the entity?
We'd have to...
Is that supplied by AutoZone? Is that supplied independently?
Yeah, AutoZone would have to, you know, obtain the services of a registered archaeologist.
Unless they made an agreement with, or had an agreement in place with another entity?
Well, there's a specific qualification for an archaeologist.
Well, certainly, yeah.
I think what they're looking at is taking out the Native American Monitor. You want to have, you want to just start off right off the square with the qualified archaeologist, and they're working with you guys, if I'm...
Yes, correct. The tribe wants to be involved, and what the agreement will help us do is, archaeologists are skilled in various disciplines, and not all archaeologists have a background in Poma culture, Poma artifacts, and that's a concern, so the tribe would definitely recommend a few archaeologists for the applicant to contact, and they'll decide who they're gonna use after the day of service.
So in regards to condition thirteen, what is being asked is to remove the Native American Monitor, and it gets specific to... Native American monitor and make it specific to...
Right.
The Big Valley Ranchery. That's, that's the, the crux of that one. And then on fifteen, it will be adding some provision that contact be made to local tribes. And then I think their other one would be an entirely new condition. Am I reading that correctly? So...
The cultural protection agreement, I know, the first bullet point.
The first bullet point, Autozone shall enter into a cultural resources protection agreement with the Big Valley Ranchery of Van de Pomo Indians Tribal Historic Preservation Office to provide cultural resource monitoring for any ground disturbing activities would be, is a request being made by the tribe as being an added condition. The other ones, we can amend the existing condition.
Right. Yeah, that's something standard that the, the tribe does with, uh, the county of Lake, the agreement will be reached on how monitoring is gonna happen, what's, what that actually entails, and that's something that the tribe's gonna be requesting in the city of Lakeport as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just out of a procedural thing, we'll need to make sure that the, that the applicant is okay with permission that, that...
That for the one you spoke of, the entry...
Well, technically any amendment, but I, I would imagine that that one would be the one that would be the one.
So, so I have it clear, it's thirteen and fifteen, and I believe there's a fortune as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, but then, but then the first bullet point of the letter provided is an addition. Okay, thank you.
Some of those conditions come verbatim above here.
There, there are some slight, there are some slight differences.
I said all of them. I mean, I mean, you're just right on there. I mean, other than writing the letter, it's pretty well covered.
I, I mistakenly made the assumption that, given that there was a cultural resources report done for this, that that was distributed to the tribes, so...
I'm gonna give you your newbie.
Don't give them too much praise.
Excellent newbie.
I should've known better.
Oh, alright.
There you go.
Catch them all.
Okay, would there be anybody else that would like to speak on this? None? Alright, we're gonna have to close the public hearing. Alright, so let's go, if we could, just go through these. I think number two is the first one, we need to get a specific height, yeah.
Talk about projects.
Well, I was thinking, yeah, projects, a condition agreement?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I don't think there was anything on the first one, but number two, we got some discussion because it's got eighteen feet, twenty-five feet, which one, how do we wanna word that? Kind of bring it down to eighteen?
My vote is thirteen.
Do we redo a photo?
I think that's consistent.
Okay.
Eighteen here.
So we just scratched the last sentence in number two.
They're all six, eighteen.
Yeah, so we scratched the last sentence in number two. Um, I think until thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. On thirteen, I was trying to think just a minute ago whether we could...
Some of it kinda combines itself.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could put some of this wording into number thirteen.
I, I think we could successfully combine those two. I mean, they're fairly close, it's just a matter of, of integrating specifically the Big Valley Ranchery.
Right, exactly. And where, do we need to, well, we do need to get that worded, so, um, instead of Native American monitor, we would put a, well, let's see...
Wouldn't it be the Big Valley Ranchery, Van de Pomo Indians, and a qualified archaeologist?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to think of, how we...
Instead of and/or, it should be both.
And.
Yes.
And.
Get rid of the or, and instead of just Native American, we put the Big Valley Ranchery of Van de Pomo Indians.
So that's modifying thirteen.
Right. Modifying thirteen, yes. or the second bullet?
Uh, that would be the third bullet.
Third bullet. Third bullet item, adding their last sentence essentially.
Right, so the last sentence we need to make, resume outside the burial location. Last sentence, okay.
And then, and then to honor their request, we'll be looking at adding a new condition to address the first clause.
The cultural resource protection. Right, now is that, so my question on that is, is that something that can be mandated or is that a recommendation? Because how do you force the applicant to, to set a standard of agreement with anybody by force or by mandate in this, in this instance? So should it be worded as a recommendation?
I think a recommendation.
Yeah.
Would we, would you wanna place that above thirteen and then remember accordingly?
Yes. Okay. basin's not recommended, why?
Oh, in regards to Pier nineteen hundred's request? Uh, staff feels that, um, that those, those are sort of offsite improvements and issues that are developing even further downstream than this site and given the fact that they're upgrading the drainage, uh, with the improvements of Industrial Avenue and then the Autozone site, um, implementing their, their detention basin there, which will be metering water out, is actually gonna be improving the situation in our area.
Okay, great, thank you.
And most of it comes from Todd Gru, that area.
I, I spoke directly with our Public Works Director on this and he, he stated it's sort of a catch twenty-two because the city can go and clean out that open area that exists at the, um, the southeast boundary that the, uh, the forty-eight inch culvert's daylight prior to going under Main Street, and they have on occasion, and they can reduce that and it actually will serve as a catch basin, but it also creates other issues because it speeds up the progression of the water too. So you're, it, it's kinda hard to tell which, what ends up being worse on the effect of creating, you know, some, if you go out there right now with the water being really low out to Pier nineteen hundred, you can see what their concern is. And it's a legitimate concern, they've got sort of this sediment island that's developing and it needs to be dredged out. Um, but it's hard to tell, you know, a, a catchment basin right here may do harm to, that was, that was the comments from the Public Works Director. Um, but we feel comfortable at staff, basically, that the, the recommendations for drainage improvements as part of this project, uh, they're not gonna solve it, and you're still gonna get debris flow from the upper watershed, but they will assist in reducing sedimentation resulting from this site. And the Kmart property, their wetlands, um, in the back behind that building actually functions pretty well. It's, well, I think they, ever since Kmart's gone, it's probably helped reduce that. Anytime you pipe...
Yes.
There, you're increasing speed, that sediment travels, cause you don't want it to accumulate in the pipe.
Right.
So... Thank you for the...
I don't know if that holds.
No, it did, I, I was, just lost my train of thought on that, I just wanted to get it back, thank you.
And then we're eliminating thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, right. Anything that I missed between here and anything written?
I don't have any writing.
And...
I wanna read word thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay.
First sentence, the applicant, owner, developer shall eliminate the curb gutter sidewalk requirements on the north side.
I have that too.
I don't see how the, uh...
I thought we were just eliminating the sidewalk.
No, I don't see how, I thought the word requirement, I mean, how can the applicant, applicant, owner, developer eliminate sidewalk requirements?
Their, their previous tentative map showed sidewalk improvements over there, and our engineers asking them to remove those.
Right.
So is it the entire, the way it's implied, implying that's the entire north side of the, of Industrial Avenue, correct?
We could amend that to be for...
Isn't that what it's, that's what it reads?
The frontage of parcel four.
It should be specific, yeah. Cause you want the cul-de-sac in parcel two, or not two, but, uh...
Four.
Yeah. Four. You want that to be...
Well, you want a curb, we've got it there, but I don't think you want the sidewalk.
Right, 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 right.
Go find, um, four, five, thirty-one. The third, right there.
Just propose parcel four.
Anyway, the, the language there was a little weird. They shall install curb and gutter and then this one across out, sidewalk.
Yeah, that's probably the easiest way to do it, so the applicant, owner, developer shall install curb and gutter, strikeout and sidewalk along the north side of Industrial Avenue, along proposed parcel four. And I, I think that clears it up and that's consistent with, with our intent. And we take out the sidewalk references.
It makes sense with the sidewalk, you know, there's nothing there, but when it's timed, ready to go.
Yeah, and you're, and by keeping the gutter and the curb, you're still maintaining the edge of that pavement there.
Right. Which is very important. We need more of that.
And then a lot of that other stuff is, is trying to maintain the existing, the drainage that's there along, um, was that two ninety-two and then, um, the, the rest of the Underberg property, it's not part of this project, trying to maintain that existing drainage, so it continues along that north side without having to redo entirely the improvements there. That was a very careful crafting between Mr. Eif and our city engineer, modifying that.
Do I have anything else to address?
Well, we haven't, we haven't made a decision or have we made a decision on the actual, or had a discussion on the signage as to whether we have consensus as to the size of it and we're allowing to pile on or not?
We have consensus.
For...
Not allowing to...
Did you bring it in?
Twenty-five foot line.
Ask for the staff report.
Ask for the staff report, yes.
Just keep it within no variance.
No variance.
No variance.
Just one...
I have a question on forty-six.
Forty-six.
That's the one. Um, in, uh, condition number thirty-six, you talked about a five-foot public utility even and pedestrian even behind the sidewalk. And then forty-six also has those two different locations, uh, on the cabinet and legs.
I think those are some...
Well, I, forty-six was developed specifically to talk about that, to kind of eliminate the, the flow line there, but it does, does appear, unless I'm reading it wrong, that thirty-six does cover it already. Cause thirty-six, one of, one of the challenges we had in this was trying to make sure that we kept conditions a little bit separate as far as what's gonna be the responsibility of the property owner versus what's gonna be the responsibility of the Autozone project, so that's, I think what we're seeing here.
Well, maybe that's the reason I'm there.
It, it may be easier upon, you know, our building official going through to leave that there, even though they do seem like they're...
Well, I agree, I, I just wanted to...
Because one of, one of the interesting things here is technically you could approve this architectural design review and they could build this building without the parcel. That's something, that's an, an agreement between the property owner and, and the developer. That's not a requirement of the city. I mean, it makes sense, cause they, they wanna have ownership of, of that site and not be responsible for the rest of the parcel, but from a zoning more than standard, it's not required. So there, there could be the potential that you could have the building, uh, the Autozone proceed the actual report, reparation of the map, that we wouldn't stand in that process. I doubt that that's what would happen, but that may be a reason for keeping forty-six in place. If it's hurting, no.
Do we have anything in here about the streetlight?
No, but it's something we can add.
And we have something, yes, I'd like to have something there.
Okay.
How would you like to word it?
Well, there were, yeah, there was a recommendation that was sent to me to, to consider looking into condition sixty-two or something similar, so I was just reading that.
Sixty-two, the last clause, the last sentence talks about the developing of a plan for the undergrounding. It could be a logical spot if you wanted to require that.
Well, you know, they've got the parking lot lights that are right out there by Main Street too.
But they're blocked.
Yeah, but it still shows the sidewalks.
I'm not worried about the sidewalks, I'm worried about the cars turning onto North Main Street, head north, not so much south. And if there's people walking, as dark as that is...
It's so dark here.
But Lakeport Tire doesn't have any illumination at all on that side, so it would be great, I mean, if, if, if Lakeport Tire had illumination, I would agree with you, but the way it stands, it don't, so you've got half of the intersection lit and the other half not, that's, I don't think that's a... That's just...
Well, plus the location of the streetlight can be manipulated, and if they're going to go underground on some of those utilities and clean up our mess, possibly, um, it will improve them because they'll have better visibility and, um, it can't possibly be tied in on the, I mean, that's something they have to figure out.
In my way of thinking, the overall improvement of Industrial Avenue is tremendous to begin with, so don't short it by, by leaving out something as basic as an intersection. I think that's kinda common sense.
It is.
So...
So is getting rid of poles and our middle east sidewalk.
Right, right. So, I mean, clause sixty-two works for me, but if there's another...
You think that covers the light?
We have to add specific language.
Oh, okay, well, that's scary.
And you could, you could... You could make it, it's unconditional.
I would just add it. Well, you could say, "The applicant owner developer shall provide a plan detailing provisions of electrical, streetlights," and then, you know...
One.
Yeah.
One?
Streetlight.
One.
Right.
Okay, let's do that.
But if they're gonna, yeah. Because in the future, if the land is developed, they're going to want to put in more lights down the line. They'll just add it as they go.
Right. And it'll already be there.
Right.
To tag on to.
Yeah, I drove down that area, it was brought to my attention, I need to look at it now.
It's black.
Stop the section of town.
It's black.
Black.
Yeah. And then you want, you know, the new police station and all the different security and safety issues, it's better to have it eliminated, so that's my recommendation, is to add it there.
If any kind of traffic mitigation that will help that area, that area is developing so much, like we said with the police station and, well, Kmart is our one and only, but that's constant traffic. And then we're adding another auto parts, now it's going to be more traffic.
Well, and then down the line...
And down the line.
You know, they're shifting the businesses from Main Street down to South Street, so you're going to get a lot more going on there.
A lot more, yeah.
And if people are crossing the street in nineteen hundred to come across the auto parts, they're going to want to have a well-lit intersection.
Right. Do we do anything with the crosswalk issue?
There's no proposed crosswalks and...
Is that the responsibility... Whose responsibility is that?
City's.
So we're going to have to step up on that department.
You mean, across Main?
Yes.
At that location?
Yes.
Yeah, we'd have to talk with our development staff on there, I mean, as far as, folks are traveling pretty fast there to...
Very fast.
And unfortunate, but sometimes we put crosswalk lines, there's a false sense of security that's...
Right. Well, I'm almost thinking that we need something that's, you know, we've been talking about this Parks and Rec Commission, about, you know, our trails, and that particular area can't be so dark, and if people are trying to cross over to utilize that business, we have to think about something else.
Yeah, I mean, it may be more appropriate to locate any sort of crosswalk in regards closer to Kmart and the new police station.
Right.
And maybe at this location.
Right.
We'd have a little wider and better site dispositions.
We need to break something up, and I'm not sure whose responsibility that is.
Well, we're in the process of getting our Transportation Safety and Advisers Committee back in order, so that's, I put that down and note that as a location to discuss. Lots of items discussed.
Yes, there are.
Inactive for a couple of years.
Yes, it has been.
On item forty-eight, it's a three-quarter inch water meter going in. I was down at the city water a couple days ago, and they said they're doing away with three-quarter. They're going to only do one inch now because of the fire protection systems that have to go into residential and business. But I don't know if that's still going to be, they're going to use up the ones they've got, or that's going to go up to one inch.
Yeah, I don't know if that's been fully adopted. I know that's the direction they're going.
Yes.
This condition came directly from them.
And they just put one in.
Yeah.
I mean, over on Parallel Drive, just last week.
Correct, one inch?
Three-quarter.
Three-quarter.
But they're using up what they've got, and they're not going to order anymore three-quarter.
So the question is, is this the opportunity to go ahead and step it up for one inch?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if this one building is going to require it or not. I'm not going to look forward back.
Future development.
We may just want to ask Public Works and verify that that's still good, because I don't know how long it's been in the process.
What's the fire suppression system of this building? It's under the square foot requirement, right? Yeah, so it's not required, so three-quarter would probably be fine.
But if they're doing away...
Well, if they're doing away, so...
They're doing away.
What about...
Does that mean it has to be redone?
Those will have to be addressed as far as the improvement plans and things like that.
Exactly.
Does that mean that it has to be redone if there's another building built in the area?
Potentially, if they maybe need to upgrade it, that's it.
Well, if there's another building, they'll have their own meter.
Okay, so it's three-quarters.
Yeah, yeah.
Just one issue.
It's a moon issue.
Yes, they're on forever.
Not sure.
Yeah, no, it's not talking about the main one.
Right, okay.
All right, any others that we missed?
Just the language on the streetlight.
Think we had...
Oh, and sixty-two?
Yeah.
On the second sentence in that, number sixty-two, "The applicant owner developer shall provide a plan detailing provision of electrical, streetlight, telephone cable, television and internet services."
So just add the streetlight.
Yeah, I had, just adding on there, streetlight at the intersection.
Yes, specific.
If that's all, just as a matter of protocol, you probably want to bring the applicant back up to make sure that they're... Won't you have any questions?
Okay.
Changes. Well, I think the signage condition in...
I think that was a separate...
Separate issue?
Well, there was a condition in their fourth signage.
It was a separate request.
Well, different from the variance. I mean, whether they're granted the variance or not, they're going to need to provide their signage to us.
Fifty-four talks about the sign, but it just talks about...
Yes, it's general enough to cover both instances itself.
Yeah.
So you don't want to vote on the signed variance request?
No, we will. There's a lot going on here.
One step at a time.
Okay, so any others on the conditions agreement? Conditions agreement? Anything to do? All right. Go ahead and open the floor again, and get him back up. Open up a public hearing, and if we can get the engineer to come back in, sir. Were you keeping up with this as we were...
I was, yes. Now, I think some of these suggestions are good, and we can certainly bring it back. Now, both AutoZone and the property owner will need to review these revised conditions since they've already agreed to the original ones.
Right.
So the modifications, of course, they'll have to go back and review those.
Correct.
But yeah, I've got notes on all of the items that we mentioned.
Okay. And you don't...
Any of them seen?
Do you foresee a problem on any of them?
You know, the streetlight on the corner, you know, there's an existing joint pole there now, and I think that we could probably put a light right on there, on the pole. So that'll probably satisfy that. The other items, you know, as far as the Big Valley Ranchery, I'll just have to bring it back to AutoZone, you know, for them to enter into an agreement, I guess, just have to find out what the ramifications of that will be. I know it sounds like it's a recommended condition, and certainly AutoZone wants to do what they can to, you know, work with the tribe. But yeah, the other ones, I think are straightforward. And I don't see any, any, any other concerns or big concerns. I guess just a very minor thing, the item number nineteen, the proposed underground, it says retention basis, it actually would be a detention basis. And the building, the AutoZone building will be fire sprinklered, so there will be a separate fire connection and fire sprinkler system for the building. And then, you know, if it's a three-quarter or one inch, typically AutoZone uses a minimum of one inch for their domestic, and depending on the amount of landscaping, they may have another separate meter for that, maybe another inch. We can look at that in detail.
Okay. Probably solves that.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. Any other?
One thing, was there any specificity on the cleanup that they were going to do on that corner of the...
The actual...
The actual underground...
The existing structure that's there?
The existing underground lighting or whatever, I'm thinking as far as the pole is concerned, moving the wiring around, we were talking about underground...
Underground along Main Street?
Yes, yeah. I mean, on their corner, they were talking, wasn't that mentioned that they were going to try to put something underground?
It was, but I don't...
The utilities?
Yeah. I think that was addressed in any of your...
No, no.
Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
It's a good opportunity.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, go ahead and close the public forum. All right, any more discussion amongst ourselves? So first thing then is on the mitigated declaration. It's on the back of the staff report.
Yeah, I apologize, but this is a more cleaner way of doing it. I know it's going to...
So we need individual motions on each one of these?
I would...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll make one person to do all of them.
You.
All right. So do I have a motion for the mitigated declaration?
How are we going to do? We're just going to do each one of these?
Individually. You can take different ones.
Okay, so I'll go to the easy one. I will chair the mitigated declaration approval. I move to approve the project in accordance with the recommended motion as contained in the staff report and as amended by the planning commission.
I guess we're not allowed to say ditto, right?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The second by Commissioner Copper. Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Wicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Copper?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
I'll aye.
Chair Gainer?
Aye.
All right, that one is passed. The tentative parcel map, the motion approved that.
Honorable Chair, I will move that the planning commission find that the tentative parcel map applied for by San La Monica on property located at three oh one and four oh one Industrial Avenue is in conformity with the provisions of the California Subdivision Map Act and Chapter sixteen of the Lakeport Municipal Code, and on that basis, approve said map subject to the project conditions of approval and with the findings listed in the staff report dated December ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wicks. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Russell. Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Copper?
Aye.
Commissioner Wicks?
Aye.
Chair Gainer?
Aye.
That one passes. Zone change.
Direct. Next one, direct.
I thought we weren't doing the lot line.
Well, you're not, you're just directing staff to complete it. There's not an actual approval.
All right, so do I have a motion to do the, direct the cleaning of the building?
To pass it off to them, yes. I'll do that one. I'd like to direct the community development staff to complete the lot line adjustment. Move to direct staff to complete the lot line adjustment application, LLA dash fourteen dash oh one, as applied for by San La Monica and Bob and Tony Thunderburg, between properties located at three oh one Industrial Avenue and two ninety-two Industrial Avenue prior to the recordation of the final parcel map, PM fourteen dash oh one, on the basis that the application is in conformity with the provisions of the California Subdivision Map Act and Chapter sixteen of Lakeport Municipal Code, subject to the findings listed in the staff reported, report dated December ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Russell. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Taylor. Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Copper?
Aye.
Commissioner Wicks?
Aye.
Chair Gainer?
Aye.
So that one's passing. Zone change, the motion for zone change.
Honorable Chair, zone change approval. Move that the planning commission recommended the city council approve a Lakeport zoning ordinance amended, CC fourteen dash oh one, as applied by San La Monica and AutoZone Incorporated for a portion of property proposed partial lot one, located at three oh one and four oh one Industrial Avenue, from one industrial to C two major retail, subject to the findings listed in the staff report dated December ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Copper. Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Wicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Copper?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Chair Gainer?
Aye.
Okay, architectural and design, a motion.
I move that the planning commission find that the architectural and design review, AR fourteen dash eleven, as applied for by AutoZone Incorporated on property located at three oh one and four oh one Industrial Avenue, does meet the requirements of Section seventeen point twenty-seven point oh eight oh of the Lakeport zoning ordinance, subject to the approval of CC fourteen dash oh one by the city council, and approve the architectural and design review subject to the project conditions of approval. And with findings listed in the staff report and as amended at the planning commission meeting on December ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Copper. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Taylor. Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Wicks?
Aye.
Commissioner Copper?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Chair Gainer?
Aye.
Yes, the signed variance, do I have a motion?
Honorable Chair, I will move that the variance, VA fourteen dash oh one, is applied for by AutoZone Incorporated on property located at three oh one and four oh one Industrial Avenue, to exceed the maximum permitted building mounted sign allowance by an additional fifty square feet, does not meet the requirements of Section seventeen twenty-six oh five oh of the Lakeport zoning ordinance, and does not grant the variance subject to the findings listed in the staff report dated December ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Wicks. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a second by Commissioner Russell. Can you call the roll?
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner Copper?
Aye.
Commissioner Wicks?
Aye.
Chair Gainer?
Aye.
Any other comments from staff?
Yeah, I'll just provide a quick update. The last city council meeting, the city council did take action upon the appeal of the, by Ms. Resika regarding your guys' May decision on the Verizon cell tower on North High Street. And they granted her appeal, which effectively overturned your guys' May fifteen decision. So the result of that being, we now have a thirty-day statutory clock picking whether or not Verizon chooses to pursue that at a legal level and file a lawsuit if it's a grievance deficit. So that was a long time time. We had four or five different hearings on that. They did finally reach a conclusion at their last meeting on December first. We provided you an additional updated project listing. We provided you an additional updated project listing there and then also I believe Dan provided you guys with a copy of the draft initial study for the Sombard projects.
Did you get one?
What I would impress you, you pull it, you know, it's give you kind of a heads up to work on it or review it in time.
Yeah.
Then, you know, if there's any issues, please contact me. We'd work, you know, rather, much rather work out the issues early on than whether it's weighed into a hearing. But it's just kind of available for you. If you guys could keep track of it so we don't have to print up a whole new set of initial studies for everybody when we hear this on January 13th.
Yeah, that's, that's all scheduled through January 13th. Planning commission. I don't know at this point if there'll be any additional items on that agenda. That one definitely does. Already been a legal notice sent out consistent with the CECL provisions for that project. I don't know that I have any additional updates. Just by note for record that Dan and I will be attending a conference on, just a little seminar on Monday at Running Creek Casino regarding new AB 52 legislation and some changes in the CECL cultural resources provisions that's being put on by our local tribes. They were able to drag a pretty high-ranking state official in the state office up there to come down over here to us locally. That's great. I mean, usually we end up traveling Santa Rosa, Sacramento, even further to get the source stuff. So we'll be attending that on Monday and I can provide you with an update on that legislation accordingly in January. I don't know that I'm missing anything. Sure, yeah, no, okay.
Just kind of a heads up. I believe today or tomorrow, well, we're mailing out RFP, which I think we'll do about today. This are bester proposals. Basically what it represents is the city got a CDBG loan for $9,500, excuse me, $95,000 and then the city matched it with an additional $5,000. So it's a total of $100,000. And it was originally to update, kind of a revitalization of the lakefront property along Clear Lake. It was usually looking originally at the school property and the city's property to north of here. Since then, we've kind of expanded it from Clear Lake Avenue down to, yeah, Number 2 C Street. So we got the Willow Point. And basically the idea is to hire a consultant. This is further down the road. And the idea, reason I'm saying this right now is to maybe start your thinking about what you'd like to see down in that particular area along the shoreline, Main Street. And the idea of this report or this plan is to revitalize looking economic, looking recreation, how we could develop this area and to kind of pull it all together kind of thing. So we're kind of expanding it even further than it was originally granted by CDBG because we just think it's really important for upgrading the whole shoreline area of Lakeport.
Could that include a path?
Well, there's, you know, it includes everything. I mean, you know, it just, there's nothing, there's nothing proposed yet. First, we have to hire the consultant. Then there's going to be a number of public meetings to kind of get input for the public. So it would be really helpful if you kind of got people excited who would like to get excited about this kind of a project to get involved and get to those meetings and start thinking about what you'd like to see in the downtown area.
There have been several waterfront development plans in the past, but what we realized in looking through them is a lot of them lacked a lot of public buy-in on it. So one of the first things we'll do once a consultant's on board is provide them those materials from past studies. But really a key component of this is that public outreach portion. And then once we do have a final product, it would come for you guys to review and take a look at. Really what we're expecting out of it is kind of a specific plan of development. So future developers coming in will have, you know, this is the community buy-in process, a little higher level of confidence and a sort of better overview of what's expected for that area.
Okay, developing a direction for this particular area.
Would be wonderful.
So it's going to incorporate the hotels or the motels up on Main?
Yes, yes.
And the cars at Willow Point, too? Even though that's private property?
And the other property south of Willow Point.
Yeah.
And?
How far south?
Huh?
Across the, like, lands, like Lon Burgess' house?
Right up.
Right next to it.
Right next to C Street there with that vacant property at Number 2 C Street.
Didn't we just do a study a year and a half ago about Martin Street neighborhood?
Oh, the Forbes, the Forbes Creek neighborhood study, yes.
Any traction on that?
Well, they've, you've, we've been able to get some grant monies to assist in some sidewalk development projects in that area and we still continue to look for excellent opportunities to leverage that study. And I mean, that's, all these things, you know, tie into each other. So I mean, that's a key study to look at because, I mean, ideally you can get opportunities for trail connections to the water tunnel to move down that area.
Does that have grant money still?
What's that?
Does it have grant money?
Well, if grants come available where we can make it stick, absolutely.
Yeah, that's the money. Always the money.
Always the money.
But those, but those types of studies and this study as well does give us some leverage in those future grant applications. The other thing to note just as well, our city engineer is also in the process of putting together our new grant for, another CDBG grant for the placement of a lift within the, you know, an ADA lift within the Carnegie Library as well, which is, there've been a number of studies on that. Trying to make that more ADA accessible, which increases use options for that key building as well. Lots of thumbs up.
Has there been any update on the, any update on the Martin Street senior project?
Yeah, I've, nothing since the last planning commission meeting. I think what, they scored very high at the state level, the HCD. I think, you know, they're all keyed and ready to receive their check for that first portion. The problem has been at the congressional level, that money for that program has not been guaranteed and has not been allocated and there's some questions on whether it will be or not. So it's kind of a holding pattern there, which is unfortunate because I think they need an answer here in the relatively near future. I don't know when that is. I want to say by April so that they can apply for an additional grant for off-site activities. They needed both of those grants in order to move forward with the project. So they look like they're in good standing if the money is available for that first grant. So first hurdle, okay. We'll see what they do there in Washington.
All right.
I'd like to compliment the staff on this very extensive report and it's got to be very extensive for Commissioner Wicks not to tear it apart.
Oh.
And we spent less time on this than any other thing.
I already made my combinations and I appreciated it greatly. This is one of the better, better bellin' forms packages. I mean, for the benefit of the public, it is just that, this is just AutoZone. This is nothing else but AutoZone.
This doesn't include the maps.
No, it doesn't include the maps.
Well, I will certainly extend our thanks to.
So a lot of good, a lot of good work was done.
To Andrew as well. He is very instrumental on this. This was big.
Made it easy to navigate.
I don't know how many.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, one last thing to add. You'll see, this is sort of a remnant of the last, one of the other items that you'll probably see it's changed in the next, after you give us all the compliments on this one. One of the things we're changing is there's some discretion, well, there's not some discretion. I have some, a lot of what we consider to be mitigation measures in the past, I think actually are conditions of approval. So you may see some of that reverse a little bit where these mitigation measures may be conditions of approval. I think a lot of our standard conditions, you know, the payment fees, things like that, those are not necessarily mitigation measures that are, should be required within the initial study. They're conditions of approval of a project based on our MEB code. So you might see some of those standard conditions move out of the mitigation measure category and into a condition measure. So I just wanted you guys to see that's kind of an internal thing, but it's going to be reflected in future staff reports, so.
So would you like this pile of paper? You know, I'm going to keep it. I just wanted to see, show the public what we.
Make sure you keep the Sombard initial study.
We'll keep it all, we'll keep it all.
So are we still talking about perhaps next year doing a general plan review?
Yes, yeah, I think, I think probably here in the next meeting, you'll have chair elections, the Sombard one, and then I think at least a discussion of, one of the things I think that we need to get going on is actually annually reviewing our general plan and what needs to be done and updated with it. Also, what I want to do is present you panel with everything that's on our plate and get your guys' sort of rankings on what you think is the highest priority. And then I can balance that against what the city council thinks is the highest priority and what the city manager thinks is the highest priority. I think you go from there. But I think it's valuable for you guys to see everything that's on there. I mean, we've got a lot of things going on as we talked about, the lakefront planning grants and these other items. Our city engineer gets quite a bit done in the one day that he's with us. So I mean, there's a lot going on, so I want you guys to see all that.
Is that hiring search still on?
For our CDB tech? Yes, I need to give more attention to that.
Just checking.
Give a blind push shot.
Are you kidding me?
And yeah, and then it's probably important to note, too, that, you know, Fisher Copper officially gave his, this is technically his last meeting.
Oh.
But until we've got an advertisement in there, I don't know if we've got any applicants yet. The next city council meeting, they're doing some appointments to commissions. We gave a little extra time for the planning commission appointment. So I'm going to try and convince him if maybe he'll stay on.
We all have to work on it.
Certainly.
We can't live it on.
Needle a little bit. Need that, one more month of torture. Lastly, your, I believe your next scheduled meeting agenda should be January 13th, not 12th.
Right.
12th is Tuesday.
All right.
Don't tell our office.
Yeah, two places at once.
So with that, I'll go into adjournment meeting.
Okay, okay.